Okay, well here we go. Right?
How are you Larry?
Were you there?
No, how are you?
That's alright, that's alright. Alright, well good afternoon ladies and gentlemen and welcome to this Tuesday, January 23rd, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome a full house of folks here in attendance and everybody watching online. If everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Pastor Cole will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow your head to me please? Lord God, we just pause to give you thanks for this good day that you have given to us. We also give you thanks for those who are serving us as commissioners. Pray you would continue to bless them and all their deliberations, Lord, give them a sense of wisdom and insight into all their matters. We also give you a thanks for Mr. Yoder today and ask your blessings on him for all that he has done over the years and then what lies before him. Pray, Lord, that you continue to use him for your good purpose. Amen.
Please be seated. Thanks Pat. Mr. Knoll, are there any additions, corrections, deletions to the public meeting agenda?
Yeah, yes sir, there is. During the administrative session, we asked for authorization to dispose of surplus property, which you all agreed to do.
Alright. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting or any questions, corrections, concerns to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, minutes approved by mutual consent. A very light agenda as far as action items, but a very full agenda as far as introductions and recognitions, which I think is why we have such a full house of people here today. Before we get into what I think most of you are here for, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our new EMS chief, and you thought they were all here to... To welcome Derek Crippen onboard is our new Chief of EMS. Just recently hired and diving headfirst into the pool and working hard to represent all of you in here in the world of emergency medical services. And Derek, if you just want to stand for a second and give a brief intro, that would be great.
Hello everybody, Derek Crippen, born and raised in Allegheny County, because I was a brief student, living in Florida, it was really small. Spent the last 25 years in the fire and EMS, spent the last 21 years before recently retiring from Prince George County Fire and EMS. So looking forward to getting a little bit closer back to home and helping the EMS system up.
We are pleased to have you and welcome you. The next item of business is to recognize...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just tell me to shut up.
Well, I got that thing here.
Alright. I should have known.
Yeah. As I was saying...
Before you rudely interrupted.
Yeah, before I was interrupted. You're fired.
Turn it off.
I get it, I get it. It is with great pleasure and I think the audience says it all, that we get a chance to get together and thank Dwayne Yoder for all of his many ways that he has served Garrett County over the last many decades. We officially are saying thank you for retirement for 43 years of service to Garrett County Community Action, but anyone that's known Dwayne, which most of you in the room do, know that Dwayne's dedication to this community goes well beyond community action. He has served on probably every single board at one point in time or another that Garrett County has had. He has represented Garrett County in many ways across the state and nation, in many different things, in many different capacities. He served on the Board of the College, he served on the LMB, he served on Garrett County Municipalities Incorporated. And for those of you that don't know what that is, I believe Dwayne, we were the first in the nation to incorporate our municipalities because our towns are so small and we didn't qualify for a lot of state and federal programs. I believe it was Dwayne's brainchild to bring us all together under one incorporation so that we could qualify for some of those programs. I happened to be one of the early participants in that when I was mayor and it was a wonderful idea and it served the community exceptionally well. And that's just one of the things that I personally have had an opportunity to work with Dwayne on. One of many, we worked on a couple of affordable housing programs, first-time home buyers program, things that Garrett County has done that no one else has done. And Dwayne has been right there and helped with that, just driving around the communities and look at all the projects Community Action has done in the last 43 years and Dwayne's fingerprints are all over it. And I don't think it's hyperbole to say, in the last 50 years of Garrett County, there's probably three or four people that you could point to and say, these people have done the most in that period of time for Garrett County and Dwayne is certainly one of those people. And there's a lot of other people that have a lot of things to say today and we have a lot of stuff to give Dwayne, who is not expecting this. Before we do that however, I would like to pass the baton to my fellow commissioners, anything that they would like to add or say.
I'll just start. Dwayne, I think Paul summarized just about everything you've done, but you know, you're the epitome of service to the county. There's just, everything that you've done to help people and that's the key, it's to help people. And Dwayne, you've helped so many people in this county in ways that I probably have no clue. I really, I've known Wayne now for about nine years to really say that I've known him, but you know, your legacy goes way beyond that and I can see the things that you have been involved in and you know, you become a friend and you know, you're definitely going to be missed. And we hope that you'll stay involved some, some things in the county, but you know, we do appreciate it and just, you know, words just don't say what you've meant to this county. So thank you very much.
I'll keep mine short and sweet, I'm the new guy, you know, but even me and the new guy knew your work before I started this position. So that, you know, it's saying a lot that any average citizen around the county knew what you were, to a degree, knew what you were doing for the county. So we'll just thank you for that service and we really appreciate it.
So with that, we have a lot of people here that want to say a lot of things and we'll go in... Time to bring you up front, Dwayne, we probably ought to get you a chair. Maybe a rocking chair, I don't know. First off, I'd like to invite Robin Summerfield up, who has some words to share from Senator Cardin. Before you do that though, I do want to publicly state, as most of you in the room know, that the Senator is retiring as well. We did have a good farewell at Pace, I think, to say thank you to Senator Cardin, but I just want to say on behalf of Garrett County Commissioners, Senator Cardin is a good friend to Garrett County throughout his tenure, especially during ours, we've seen him a lot out here. He's done a great job for us and Robin will also be stepping down from his current position because his Senator is retiring and Robin has been absolutely excellent in his job in representing Senator Cardin to us. Thank you.
My resumes are in the lobby.
So with that, I pass it to you.
Thanks Commissioner and thank you all for being here really to celebrate a great, great public servant and citizen. I want to personally, you know, there's not enough room on these things to adequately describe the contributions that you've made. So I just want to thank you for your service, for your example. I think you're a role model to many of those of us who aspire to public service. You're the like encyclopedia picture of public service, so thank you so much for that. And with that, I will share with you a certificate of special recognition from Senator Cardin. Presented to Dwayne Yoder, I have you a fairly small palm. So hopefully I can see it. With sincere appreciation for your distinguished service to the citizens of Garrett County and State of Maryland, your service at the local, state, and national level has made a positive impact on the lives of countless individuals and families. Under your leadership, Garrett County Community Action has become one of the most successful rural community development corporations in Maryland and has been recognized as a state leader in implementing innovative early childhood education and family development strategies. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. I wish you all the best in your retirement and your future endeavors. Best wishes, Benjamin Al Cardin. Congratulations.
Robin, thank you very much. Fellow commissioners, thank you.
Sure will. Thanks.
We also have a certificate from Senator Van Hollen. The citation is presented to Dwayne Yoder in recognition of your exemplary leadership and dedication to Garrett County Community Action and your over 43 years of service to our community, with appreciation for all you have done to better the lives of others and with best wishes for an enjoyable and fulfilling retirement, Chris Van Hollen, United States Senator, on this day, the 23rd of January 2024.
Thank you. Better seats, guys.
We did give Dwayne a little holder to take everything, wouldn't we? On behalf of Congressman Trone, this certificate of congressional recognition presented to Dwayne Yoder, Garrett County Community Action Committee, thank you for your 43 years of service to the citizens of Garrett County. Your dedication and commitment to our community has not gone unnoticed and we are better for the decades of work that you have done to provide services to those in need. Congratulations on your retirement. Signed David Trone, Member of Congress, on this day, the 23rd of January 2024. On behalf of State Senator Mike McKay, we have Mark Whitmire here to present a citation on the Senator's behalf.
Trying to figure out why you're here.
Well, let's talk about some of your relatives. I'll just say Gary, I'll leave it at that. This is the Maryland General Assembly, official citation, be it hereby known that all sincere congratulations are offered to Dwayne Yoder in recognition for celebrating his retirement from the Garrett County Community Action Organization. During his 43 years of dedicated leadership and service, the organization has thrived and continued to improve for families in Garrett County. Presented to you on this 23rd day of January 2024, Senator Mike McKay from Allegheny, Garrett, Washington County Legislative District 1. Congratulations.
Not my brother Gary.
We also have a official citation from the Maryland General Assembly, sent by Delegate Jim Heimball, be it hereby known to all that sincerest congratulations are offered to Dwayne Yoder in recognition of your dedicated service as President of Garrett County Community Action Committee. Thank you for your 43 years of service and for impacting the lives of thousands of children and their families. Presented on this 23rd day of January 2024 by Delegate Jim Heimball of Garrett County and Allegheny County's Legislative District 1A. And obviously Senator McKay and Delegate Heimball cannot be here because they are in session, otherwise I can assure you they would both be in attendance today as well. I would like to invite Bob Stevens up on behalf of the LMB.
I just don't know if your father was here, but this turned into the Dwayne Yoder roast.
Perhaps.
Because it feels like it should be. So, Dwayne has, was one of the initial members on the Garrett County Local Management Board. He actually was responsible for hiring me and bringing me into the county 34 years ago. And one of the things...
Right on cue.
Part of the road.
Yeah.
Silence your fans. One of the things I'd like to say is that, you know, Dwayne is one of the people that makes me truly proud to be a public servant and, you know, I don't think anybody can ever think of John F. Kennedy without thinking of the quote, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." And Dwayne has done that with Garrett County over the many years. And I could say so many things, but on behalf of the Local Management Board, I'm going to keep this short, we have a, this is not Simon Pierce pause, but I don't think Local Management Board has that kind of... But we, this just says, "Thank you for your commitment to the Garrett County, to Garrett County residents, making it a better place to live," Garrett County Local Management Board. So, thank you so much, Dwayne, for all you've done over the years and we have several LMB members with us.
Well, thank you very much. You know, you've been one of the great partners.
And we also have a commendation. I like what Larry said and it's kind of been reiterated a couple times. I think, I think the best way to define Dwayne is public servant. Everything that he's done over the last 43 years in all the capacities has been to serve the public and to do that selflessly. And that's commendable in and of itself. And for that, I'm very pleased on behalf of Ryan and Larry to present this Board of Garrett County Commissioners commendation to Dwayne Yoder, President, Garrett County Community Action Committee Incorporated, 43 years of service. We, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners and the citizens of Garrett County, join together to recognize and express our appreciation to Dwayne Yoder for his distinguished 43 years of service, to the citizens of Garrett County in his capacity as the President of Garrett County Community Action Committee. And whereas, under Dwayne Yoder's leadership, the Garrett County Community Action Organization has emerged as one of the most successful rural community development corporations in Maryland and is recognized as a national model in second generation policy and strategy development and implementing innovative early childhood education and family development strategies. And whereas Mr. Yoder has worked closely with the Annie E. Casey Foundation and the Aspen Institute to implement a whole family approach in Garrett County and was designated along with the Human Resources Commission in Allegheny County as one of 10 rural impact sites in the US to pilot a multi-generation effort. And whereas Dwayne Yoder has spent his adult life working on anti-poverty issues at the local community level. And whereas Garrett County Community Action Committee, Inc. serves one in four Garrett County residents and one in three households, providing opportunities and programs to individuals, families, and seniors in asset development, child and family development, senior services, transportation, and community and economic development, providing 700 affordable rental units and homeownership assistance for over 800 households. And whereas Mr. Yoder has served over 33 years on the Garrett County Local Management Board, impacting the lives of thousands of childrens and their families, now therefore on behalf of the citizens of Garrett County, we want to express our sincere appreciation to Dwayne Yoder for his loyalty and service to the citizens of Garrett County and wish him much happiness as he begins the exciting new chapter of his life proclaimed this 23rd day of January 2024. Signed by Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself. And we also were able to get a little parting gift, hand blown clock by Simon Pierce. And Dwayne, on behalf of a gracious community...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we're turning it over to you buddy.
We allocated 45 minutes. Well, you know, a couple weeks ago Kevin called me and said, "Well, can you drop by at 4 o'clock?" These guys just want to at least recognize you. And it wasn't until I was sitting in my car and I saw about, I saw Dave Ramsey and a couple of my people who worked with the Community Action start walking in that I realized what this is all about. So Kevin, you were sneaky. One of the rules, back in March when I told staff that I was planning on retiring was that there was not going to be an event. And so Leah told Kevin that she doesn't understand how he did this and he said, "Because I didn't tell anyone." I don't believe it. So let me just, just a quick comment, I'm sitting here, every once in 43 years, you know, 1970s, there are a couple people in this room who way back in 1972, when I came back from Virginia, got me started in Community Action. Lowell Bender worked at Community Action at the time, he hired me. Dave Ramsey, who was like a colleague, a partner in crime for a couple of years, worked at the Community Action and they really were people who got me started. I left for about eight years then and then came back in 1980 as the Director. But let me just, you know, first of all, I know people in here know, I absolutely know that what was accomplished at Community Action, to the degree that we accomplished things around, you know, organizing our purposes to support family aspirations, creating opportunities like building homes, only took place because I think in Garrett County, there is a unique culture of collaboration in a way that I haven't seen in many other communities that I've been at. And that collaboration is what made all that possible, not any one person. I felt privileged to be a part of that and to report it in any way I can, but it was those partners and that collaboration and the people who worked at Community Action. We have people who work at Community Action, just stand up, raise your hand, one of the two people I want. It only happened around that, that's really what I wanted to say. And you know, a lot of what was going on and will continue with me or without me is based on that solid foundation. And let me also then say to this Board in particular, I've worked with a number of different county commissioner boards here and in other communities. And I've never felt that my back was as well covered as was this Board. I felt very, very confident and I want to thank you for that. It was certainly, it certainly appreciated and made my work, my job, much, much easier than if I'd have been worrying about it. So thank you guys for all that. And finally, let me just say that, you know, I am completely confident with where Community Action is headed. We're going to continue with the work. We have someone who stepped in for me, Chris Muller, raise your hand. He's been on the job now about three weeks and you know, I'm still adjusting to my new unemployment status. So Chris is going to do a really, really good job and I want to just look around, I mean, I just tend to keep off and keep, and I mean, people I want to say thank you, I'm not going to start with that until they get to be too much, but so thank you guys, thank you very much. Deverged or not deverged, I appreciate what you did.
Absolutely. Yeah, Dwayne, stay up here, yeah, come on up.
Guys can follow him behind us.
Yep. Yeah, all the Community Action folks, come on up.
Come on up behind us.
Alright. Derek, he didn't know you were going to dive into Action right away. Watch your step. So as everybody gets back to their seats, the last thing I would like to just do, and Dwayne alluded to this, introduce Chris Muller officially as Dwayne's replacement. And Chris, is there anything you'd like to say?
Does anybody know who followed Tom Brady? No, I am incredibly honored to be with Community Action. It's wonderful to know that it's on such a solid foundation and as great as Dwayne has been for this county for 43 years this time and for his lifetime, the staff, I've done one-on-ones with most of the staff, at least most of the directors. And what an amazing group of people that have been assembled at Community Action. It's truly incredible. The Vice Presidents and the Directors are an amazing group of people and I've spent a good bit of time meeting frontline folks too. In fact, on the way up here, there was a GTS, GTS about stopped at the same stoplight that I was at, I was walking and I knocked on the door. What do you want?
I'm the president, who are you?
And so, truly, what a great group of people. And as Dwayne said, Garrett County Community Action is well-positioned to move into the future and continue to address the problems that are faced by the people that are having the hardest time in this county. So kudos to all of you, and congratulations, Dwayne, and thank you for as easy a transition as they could have possibly been.
Thank you. All right. With that, that's the end of the agenda. It is now time for any public comment or questions from the community, for anything not Dwayne Yoder-related. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we adjourn? Hearing none, I do want to say that as we adjourn, we will adjourn the public meeting, but the Garrett County Commissioners will go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. Do the authority to close a public meeting for Article 3-305B to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in matters directly related to that acquisition. We will not reconvene the public meeting upon adjournment. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public meeting and go into executive session to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose. All right. With that, thank you all very much for coming. Dwayne, once again, congratulations. Meeting is adjourned.